You're on.
Work session in order. The. Can we start with work session? Twenty twenty four, I want to.
You're on.
Work session in order. The.
No feedback.
Not when you call the vote.
Mayor Pion.
President.
Councilmember Ringo. Councilmember Rogers, I'm sure he's been a little late. Councilmember Brian, here. Councilmember Flattable. Deputy clerk Johnson.
Here.
That may near city administrators, but the roll call is taking, oh, excuse me, city attorney Bob Rupi. Thank you. Now roll call is taken, sir.
Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda, there are no. Amendments allowed in work session like this. So. Voting councilman Brian to approve the agenda. Second councilmember Ringo, voting mayor to the Senate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And the ring looks like the other teams are all yours.
First, first part of the area on the agenda is going with the fire department. And fire department has three, who serves the vulnerable that are seriously taken by the council. Then ask to be able to voice their concerns regarding the change from the full time to part time. So I immediately allow firefighters to voice their concerns regarding the change people send to fire. Fire chief. Including any possible ramifications. This has been the necessary second I would move to the stuff where the conference can give action more than the conference.
And if your intention is to. Have all the firefighters waiting tonight?
My understanding that not all of them would go to the full person.
One second for discussion. And vote councilmember second, councilman Brian. So before we do that, I would like to read what we were given. From the team that was looking at the future of the fire department, we would take consideration. But the fact of this and that, and I think it remains to be discussed and find out. Well.
Before you read that, I will request them. If you belong. There's no date on this, when was this prepared? Who was it prepared by? And why you've got a divided two phone.
And out there, the level provided to council, which is some. Chief Smith. It would have been likely the current fire chief, God, or something, or staff to counsel. And not the fire chief, the rest in the clinic. We go back and look at the base on the email. And I consider all of this. That this from. Chief Smith. He's the team that was considering what, how to move forward. We assumed it would have been to all the council.
Is this something you thought for everyone in this group?
Possibly. Yeah. That is, it's part of the process that would have been the name to have the council approve it because the council approved the post.
The posting that we approved was.
So let me read what was reported to us.
That's preventing the.
As part of the transition, fire management services, local government control for the city of Malibu, the city administrator and elected officials. I first need to decide on what leadership structure for the fire department could look like. Currently, the fire department operates with the contact with fire chief. Both kind of employees in Francis, contact with citizen chief. Part time employees in Francis, local department assistant, fire chief, three captains. Which train captain position taken. The current policy calls for free additional free retainers, fire department has posted vacant positions in the past. With no applicants for the position. Would be the recommendation to eliminate these positions from the command structure moving forward. Most important consideration of the construction of the fire chief's position internally, the organization has talented individuals. Part of the demand of the fire chief position being unaffiliated, if not all current staff due to the variety of reasons. We have seen with this staff unwilling, we have seen this with staff unwilling to commit. To vacant lieutenant positions and the current vacant training captain position. Which has received, received zero applicants to date. It is strongly recommended the city consider at a minimum paid part time fire chief. And consider opening applications to an outside pool. As an example, the city of Grove operates with a paid part time chief in the longer organization. The salary range should be in the range of thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars annually. With the inclusion of here, police and fire pension benefits, which would require an additional seventeen point seven percent. Of annual salary contributions to the police and fire pension from the city. A second, likely best option, would be to consider a paid full time fire chief, emergency manager and other duties as assigned provision. Some consideration of additional duties could include the recycling. And administrative project management. Likely starting salary in this position involved closer to eighty thousand dollars annual. Day salary and the care place fire back on the healthcare shipping vacation. Other principal benefits for full time employees. There's been a lot of movement over the past three or four years in the city of Malibu, executive level fire department managing positions. And for this time, could be lower than previous, so competitive salary pressure. Okay, important consideration regardless of full time or part time instead. That that we were presented with. Originally, and that's why I constantly repeated that, said if we're going to do. A full time position, part time chief, part time something else. What would that look like? So as we're interviewing people. If they're going to be. Part time in public works and they've. Been administrative staff. It might not be a good fit. It's something administratively and they're. A mechanic or machinist, something that may not fit as well to the project management. Profession. So that was the continued discussion and feedback was, no, we want, we now we want to pull them. And there was always initially discussion of. A full time position, but part time fire chief, part time something else. In the discussion that came up to council. It came as a vote to a full time. That was. Readdressed by council. Who at least look at the part time and see if there's any part time candidates out there and if candidates. That had made it through the system would consider coming on as part time chiefs with. Either additional responsibilities or a part time. A staff. Well, with that said. That that we are operating.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I can't see further councilmembers, but I was not operating on this. The conversations that dealt with part time were after we. Posted for the fire chief position. The salary included in the draft fire chief. For me, the actual line administrator. Is eighty eight thousand, about that, to a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars annually depending on. Qualification. Again, this is something I don't recall seeing, the only recollection, recollection I have of getting with. Part time chief was recently. If indeed this was part of an initial thing, then when that. The job applications went out or the requests for applications, that should have been specified in it. And I don't believe that was what, but I don't think that happened. But I still would like to hear from fire department as to what their thoughts are, what their beliefs were. When more discussions on. The fire chief.
I would say the other thing that. When I was calling, one of our neighboring cities. Didn't hire the hard time chief and what they did is they actually put survey out to the fire department. And that was also what I mean, as part of the discussion early on, if you want to have the input in person. We definitely know. That they are not doing import on this process. So it's, it's changing again because the hours would be at the time, so. We don't have survey, they want to put the fire fighters, it's something that the. The staff and council need to be, so we can open up now if that's. Agreed upon when we.
Mr. Mayor.
At the.
Who voted that to do a survey?
The chief. And the administrators in the discussion. That we had in leadership.
And that after the last.
Nope, I'm gonna say that both of them. I, we brought the council on and having the interview committee. Selection be part of the whole process and people have been excluded from this process that we don't know yet. We never got to interview some of those people. They didn't get to do the first interview, so the people we interviewed, I don't even know what their thoughts on, are on running at the park. We got in the final interview and they're in for psychological evaluations and we have no idea what they're. Anything other than. To our interview and attended me. And that's, that's what it wants. So again, we can, we can hear them. But you're gonna get what you.
Mr. Mayor, council voted. After who was going to be on the committee. That was a council vote and the council voted that it was the city administrator, the fire chief and one other person. After the initial interviews, then we bring in the personnel committee, we changed the personnel committee. From. Councilmember Flattable, um, the Ryan, because they had had experience with that.
And, and I think that's one of the challenges we have, there were discussions without clear motion. And you remember certain things that. That we never clearly identified. We went back and said. The understanding was like the last process. We would be involved in everything. Because I remember specifically saying to Chief Schmidt. If we had done this last time, St. Francis wouldn't have been in, they would have been excluded in round one before anybody talked. And, and it was announced to us, this is what we're gonna do because this is what we do everywhere else. And it was repeated again the other night, that's, that's the way I do it everywhere.
Mr. Mayor. The hiring of contracting with St. Francis is not an equivalent to hiring a fire chief for the city of Malibu. So that was a different process, you know, for our fees, it's my understanding, and St. Francis was told. But the council chose, council voted that. Would be city minister, the. Fire chief, uh, St. uh. St. Francis fire chief and councilmember Brian would be.
They voted, they ordered that councilman Brian, confirmed Brian was the part of the interview process. We did not vote to exclude us from the whole process and, and the. Fire chief position was over before, it was a full time position. But St. Francis offered contract. We were not asking for people for a couple of years, we were asking for a full time, so. It was the equivalent, just that one of the options was the three year.
This is one of the ones, Mr..
Mayor, may I sit in a day?
Not at this time of motion. My, my pick of preference would be. To have survey, so that we can have all firefighters who participate. And represent them. Mr. Mayor, that's my Brian, out of courtesy of the firefighters who are here, I think we, we can take, take the time to hear what they have to say. We have two motions.
First, with the law of concern. Second is, uh, policy, two things, I think, giving us.
Folks, a lot of council members that. Either that's here.
Yeah.
I understand. Okay, so the motion is to. Allow firefighters who are here to. Voice their concerns at this meeting. Regarding a change from a full time to a part time. Putting ramifications of the change. And. Feel positive, it's a. So those in favor. Should be five by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Do you say aye?
That doesn't mind listening to you.
Right? So the motion carries.
We can clear the question, you said as a part of the city, so.
I'm saying ramifications of the change, which include the cost, the city.
I. I didn't know, I, I wanted that part of what you.
Yeah, it's ramifications of the change.
Mr. Mayor, can I get one? So what we're saying is we're reviewing the firefighters. But we're also doing the second part.
The unmotion. Unmotions.
So it's just the issue of firefighters, I mean. And, Mr. Mayor. I, I would like to hear, um, city administrator. Comment in regards to, he was involved with the votes and the interview process from the.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
So the, the part I just wanted to clarify this for discussion was. When the comment had made that nobody was involved or the personnel committee was not involved until. The second round of interviews, I don't think is completely accurate. Uh, we, fire chief, Schmidt and myself put together a document that we sent out to the personnel committee. Uh, stating what the plan was going forward and ask for any input that we needed to, if anybody had any questions or clarifications. We also set up the fact that once we went through the initial vetting process using the rubric. That we. Uh, provide, in the same other that we provide the documentation for. Councilmember Brian and the mayor to come in and take a look. At how we got to the selection process and how we got to the first round of interviews. Also, uh, at the first, after the first round, when we got together for the second round of interviews. Uh, both of the persons, personally individuals on the personnel committee were able to look at. The previous questions, the answers from the first round of interviews and so on and so forth, so I don't. You know, my, my concern is that when we put together that document and stated this is how we recommend the process to be going. We got no feedback, no part, no concern, no questions, we just went with the process. And now to, now to sit here and say. The only activity or only time we got involved with anything is the second round of interviews, I don't think is.
Think we did ask if we could see the documents. I did have questions as to how certain people were excluded and they said they didn't meet the criteria with the UN chief establishment. I didn't. I didn't see that and it's consistent. But there were certain people that made it through that process. At the second interview. I did ask, can I at least see the scoring sheets? And so I asked for the questions, I've given the questions. Don't know what their answers were because we haven't given the copy with their answers. Forgetting copies of the questions, I have no idea how they answered them. And. The. I got the scoring sheets. And, and of that, one person, the floor finalist dropped out, one person. Ended up being excluded. Um, in spite of their score. And so we ended up with, with that and like I said, I do not know. How they responded that first round, so it's pretty hard to make a good recommendation on. On what ended up being, in one case, a very long interview and then one being extremely short. But at this point. Council has decided that is the appropriate way to go. And the unfortunate thing is, um. We're dealing with. I, I got a letter and guessing it has to do with. With this, because I don't recall, I mean, ever completing. This position with recycling center. But somebody had this out there because this is the only thing I've seen. Where, where Chief Schmidt was saying. Hey. The likely best option would be a paid full time fire chief, business manager and other duties assigned. Which could include the recycling center or administrative project. I don't know that that came up in our council meeting. But it has come up in emails to the council and threads on Facebook. So I in no way was implying that the fire chief is a recycling superintendent, like anything to do with. Us trying to find a second center. Which is the only light one I can see. Mr. Mayor, so this is. Apparently public knowledge because. People have comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
What I recall on the conversation on fire chief, Chief Schmidt is. Comparing the fact that we have full time public works, we have full time community ministry, we have full time. Share, share, we know we're full time community staff, but yet we want to go down to a part time. Fire chief, I don't remember anything, creating anything to recycling center, we also had conversations. During that meeting about fire. Person for the, for the recycling center. Uh, that's all I got, full label, but yeah, that was never. They were never together.
And I think the, the other. Part of that is looking at cities that are submit coming. Larger than ours, that are operating with part time fire chiefs, so we've got that list, which is why the vote was taken in St. Would be candidate certified one. Consider that that was, was the option. And comparing it to other communities.
Mr. Mayor. You had that conversation, we had zero. Um, information about it, Shannon read out to staff when I got in the meeting, but I don't know the. Background to it, I don't have any questions, how the answer, the answer is, the makeup of those departments are part of the, so. And again, if we truly were looking for part time positions, this should have been something that council had discussed itself to. A long time ago, not three months before we entered our contract.
And it should have been something that was evolved two years ago.
Even, even more so.
And hopefully, well, again, I love it when a council gets all the blame. But nobody on the council has taken action. Um, and, and so we're sitting here. Two years into it. And we, we knew what the plan was when we contracted with St. Francis, so it was a three year plan, the last year was the transition. And that was last year and we didn't make that, we didn't make, make a motion, move it up. And so we extended. Another year. And, and. And we had this year, the, we worked the other day, we're gonna show it come up a couple of months. Picture to come up a year ago. And, and now we're sitting here holding back. And we've got a lot of people upset, it hasn't happened enough to come out. And. Somehow. You know, the people who wanted to. Push what they asked for months ago. Are now being considered going, holding up the process and now we're sitting here. You know, when, when the chief sent out his email saying, oh, by the way, fourth quarter is, is just observation this time here. As needed in the call. Again, why did that just come up this week?
Mr. Mayor, I am not gonna address that, yeah.
But that's.
But, but, Mr. Mayor, again. Council has not been as involved in the, he said, the fire department.
But we don't leave it to the.
Because originally the fire department reported to the fire chief.
No.
The contractors.
Like council.
Nah, no, no.
I got the guy wrote it right here. Reported to the time. I don't have the contract in front, I'll hold it up because, because.
Nevertheless, whoever was spearheading. We should have been on this street two years ago. And shame on us. For not doing, but this is where we are now. I like. I'm not sure who wants to start.
Right, please come up to the podium and give your name and your address. And speak loudly so I'll all can figure.
Mr. Mayor, council member. My name is Isaac Schultz. I reside at seven, seven, one, six, two hundred fifth avenue northwest, Malibu, Minnesota. I've spent forty years living in the city, forty to forty three years of my life in this town. Previously Burnstown Jim. The frustration. At hand. Has to do with the posturing. And the pandering. That, that's being presented in the eleventh hour of this candidate search. This is not a matter of the fire department coming before you this evening and saying, you need to make this decision or this decision. We come before you asking the very question that you just brought up, why was this not dealt with two years ago? And I ask you, Mr. Mayor. You've been involved with this for many more years than two. Fire service came to Burnstown Jim in two thousand and seven with a JPA contract with the city of Ramsey. That initial bid was sent out to Ramsey. Oak Grove and the city of Elk River. The city of Elk River chose not to submit a bid. Because of the county border and, and the fact that they were in Sherman County and we are in Elk County. Oak Grove and Ramsey submitted bids. Ramsey's bid was selected partially in part because. It was. Written to include. The opportunity for now then to be a standalone department at some point in the future. Ramsey and now then met. On a quarterly basis regarding the JPA contract. Of which I know you were a part of those meetings as the mayor of now then. There was, it was elected officials from both cities, the Ramsey city administrator. And the Ramsey chief. You can correct me if I am incorrect on that.
We, we had a fire board, we had other, you know, the council everyone.
Correct. In two thousand and nineteen, when Ramsey and now then decided to part ways, there was a two year process in which. Now then was to be stood up. Is that correct?
It ended up being a two year process.
Cause I was in the contract, yep.
Well, like the contract was they could end it at the end of the year, but it was a legislation that made two year pass.
Correct. So now then. Had two years, a, a start point of two years at that point. But formulate a plan for the future of fire service in this community. At that point, it was decided that they would contract with St. Francis. St. Francis was contracted with for three years. Twenty one, twenty two, twenty three. Now then had an additional three years then, when you look at the first two. And the next three, five total. To make a plan for leadership for the future. Am I incorrect in that, in that map?
I would say that. The, the two years was simply time to figure out how you separate assignments. There was no plan at that point as to. The long range other than we were looking. We did investigate the APAs, we did standalone, investigated district. Uh, we, we were a lot of investigation to begin with. And then we had to go to the legislature to find out what we legally could do.
From a split.
In that process. In twenty twenty. And we started search for the chief.
Correct.
And, and the candidates that came forward were for full time chief, to start up the department. And we had the addition of the contract. Arrangement presented by St. Francis. It was selected in the fall of that year. To go with, with St. Francis. Um, on a contract basis. And then by again, our, our concern of that. Was getting the state fired. Because that was not stood up January first.
Correct.
Technically, we did not qualify for state firing. I just had to go back to legislature and change because there's certain prepare of.
Correct.
So, so most of that. Initially. So most of that initial, you're saying two years, were getting technical. Information together and legislation to get a transition. The, the association and the, the negotiations to pay out all the firefighters. Whether they were vested or not from, from Ramsey. To come over, we would pay them out cash of their fire, of the association and start right here with that.
Ramsey leaf would pay out the relief, Nowland did not pay any.
No.
So continuing on, continuing on.
But that's where most of that first year.
Fair enough. We had three years with the initial contract with Saint Francis. To formulate a plan moving forward regarding Nowland fires and leadership. We had made a decision at that point as a city to be a standalone department. An independent department and continue serving our community of thirty-six square miles with fire service. In-house from Nowland Fire Department. No decision was made during that three years for a future, and a stopgap contract was continued with Saint Francis for an additional year. With six months being leadership and then six months being a transitionary period. With, with an advisory role starting October first.
The, the original contract did call for year one for setup. As, as a G that's will be, um, get the equipment straightened out, that first year was going to be getting this thing up and running.
Correct.
Make sure we retain people and recruit people. The second year was stabilization, the third year was to be looking for. A, a chief.
So we.
Not yet. Remember, we had assistant chief. Who was being targeted, presented, prepared by chief. To be able to.
That individual is no longer employed by the city of Nowland.
No, like at that time, year three, that's when that person was being. Considered for that spot.
Again.
There would be a chief, now something happened and there was a separation, but in that year three for a search for a candidate. There was a potential for internal candidate. That because of what happened in that departure, also set the fire department back because we ended up with extended investigation. And so that also delayed, took away from what would have been searching to try and stabilize.
So, Mr. Mayor, we also had year four, contract four, or a, an additional year added. With the, with the city of Saint Francis, correct? Which we are in now, we're, we're nine months through that time.
That's correct.
So the goal here is, is not to come before you demanding any particular action. Or part-time or full-time, but rather asking you and not allowing you to, to put your hands up and say. We didn't know this was coming. You've already admitted that this should have been dealt with two years ago, so the issue at hand is not. Is not that you are doing your due diligence as an elected official, I'm a taxpayer, I have two parcels, two properties in this. In this community, we cannot continue kicking the can down the road with our tax rate and our plans for the future. It is what we have done and continue to do, and it is evident by the vote that you guys took last Tuesday, grenading this entire process. This has potential to be Nowland's nine eleven. And I do not say that flippantly, and I do not say that with any disrespect for the, the tragic loss of life. Twenty years ago. But the detriment that you guys are causing or have the potential to cause is that significant for our community? This is not a threat. I speak for myself and myself alone, but I promise you that I am not stepping away from this department and will continue to serve this community. As I have done for the past sixteen years in the fire service. So it is not a matter of asking. Asking you to reconsider. What decision you made on Tuesday, it's asking you, why did you get the cart so far in front of the horse? In which you are asking these questions now. Those questions should have been asked six months ago, twelve months ago, eighteen months ago, twenty-four months ago. And instead, we are on the cusp of a transitionary period starting for the last quarter of twenty twenty-four. And no leadership set up for twenty twenty-five. And here we sit. Now you have very, very capable men and women in this room and some that are not. That are able to serve the community in the three areas that we do, fire, rescue and EMAT. And you guys have done wonderful, giving us all of the tools that we need. To fulfill our duty to our citizens and those passing through our community. But in the eleventh hour, you have hamstrung us and said. I guess we just can't, can't make that budgetary commitment in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. And I appreciate that as elected officials, you have grave responsibility to the residents that have elected you. And any decision that you make as elected official will always be wrong in the eyes of someone. But I ask you, how did this happen? You've been involved with this for years. And you and I, council member Flattable, have had numerous conversations. Regarding the fact that the chief position needs to be filled in some form. So I ask you, why now? That is where. The emotion comes into play. This is not a matter of demanding, no department that demands anything from a council, an administrator. Elected officials gets anywhere in life. That gets you nowhere, that is the quickest way to get. Essentially told. We aren't going to continue supporting your department, budget cuts, those sorts of, sorts of things, so we don't come before you making demands. We come before you to make sure that it is on record, that the community knows that this has been in place for years. And we're blowing it up now, and that the fire department plans on continuing to serve this community that we all love.
Can I ask some questions as well?
I would love you to.
Okay, so first of all, I want to make a statement that I have been involved in this for a long time. Our board back, uh, with the JPA, uh, they were looking at districts for half a dozen cities. Um, looked at a lot of, you know, seen a lot of different options. And, and one thing, you know, I've, I've been to the relief association dinners. And the awards that go on there and the accolades that go on there, and I've spoken of those, and I have nothing but the utmost respect. For the commitment and professionalism that our fire department in particular has always displayed. It was a risky thing to say, we're going to offer a payout. And we, we got.
Now this did not offer a payout. The Ramsey Relief Association gave a payout that was deserved and earned. By those firefighters that were hired by the city of Ramsey.
But not all of them were vested, fully vested.
I wasn't fully vested.
And, and yet they got, they vested a month.
Because I was fired from Ramsey Fire, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Because of decisions outside of my own, because mom and dad could not get along, because the two councils could not come to an agreement for the future. I was essentially let go from Ramsey Fire.
And, and, and a twenty-four hundred percent increase was not an acceptable. It was, we need you to go, here's a twenty-four hundred percent increase in case you're not getting this. We are voting as a council, if you remember the meetings we had on Wednesday, when we were called up front, totally. Pop Carter, when the mayor and I were called up with the administrator, the chief said, there you go, and we're like. What, go, go, what, what's going on here?
I don't believe that that's Termaine's, it's nice.
Well, I'm saying, that vote was already going to go in, Ramsey council. We didn't even know what went on.
So at this point, we are N F D.
Right, and so, that being said, I appreciate that we were able to work with Ramsey to get the relief association. To pay that up, the risk was, nobody comes over. The integrity of the people that came over and set this department up is above reproach.
That's not in question.
And, and the cal, man, I remember sitting with you guys before we even started this and said, we don't need you, we're really good. We're really good at what we do, and you are really. And I would venture to say, from what I've heard at meetings. In this year, you guys have been running the department. Now, is that a long-term strategy? No. Do we, do we just appoint another captain? Does it look like we can, we can overwork? The, the squad we have. No, we need to, to resolve. But we also understand you guys have been running this thing since Ramsey did. And we have had a chief entitled this year.
Mr. Mayor, there, that, that. There needs to be some clarification on your definition of running. We are extremely capable of providing service to the community. In the full scope in which we do so. That has nothing to do with running a department. And because of the council's decision, again, I will say to grenade this search process in the eleventh hour. You are now expecting our two captains, who are still paid on fire, paid on-call firefighters. To take over those responsibilities. And that is unfair and unacceptable that the council would expect that type of action. From paid-on-call individuals, mind you, that are just two. Poor planning on the council's part does not create an emergency on our two captains. That is unacceptable. So the argument is not that you don't have valid questions. The issue at hand is that your questions are completely out of order. And to sit and claim that you have no understanding where this came from and that, that we're move, we're moving forward at this point.
I don't think anybody's claiming we have no idea. We have been told repeatedly, less than professionals do they got. Correct, we have a professional chief, we have a professional newspaper.
And they have represented our interest, our interest flawlessly. As firefighters looking for leadership. Chief Schmidt and our city administrator liner have done an impeccable job with that relationship. And putting the best foot forward for the future for us. That is not in question. The only issue at hand here is the council's decision or lack thereof of making a decision for the future and kicking that can down the road. And it boils down to taxes. We want to continue to argue that, oh, we have the lowest tax rate in the city of Nowland, or in the, in the county of Anoka. City of Nowland is so great, we cannot continue to budget and, and run on a shoestring budget. If we want to have a population that is rural with a five-acre gross density. Where it still feels like country, which I assure you, it does not feel like country on Boston. Maybe on two hundred and fifth, but not Boston. Then there are forty years, and I promise you that it does not feel like country there. If we want to continue down that path, that is going to require an increased cost for our citizens, myself included. It's going to cost money because we don't have the population base, because we don't have the business. So in a time in which we've seen since COVID, prices continue to skyrocket and a pinch on everyone's budget. I don't care if you make ten thousand dollars a year, a hundred thousand dollars a year, or millions of dollars a year, everyone has faced a pinch. And every level of government has faced a pinch. And unfortunately, if we want these things to continue and we want to maintain our, our rural landscape. Where we have large acre estates and no neighbors and no subdivisions. Then we're gonna have to pay you. You can't have your cake and eat it too. So I will defer to anyone else of my esteemed colleagues that would like to speak.
Mayor, council, my name is Michael Nelson, I live at two zero six three three. Aiden Boulevard, um, in Nowland. I apologize if any of my points coincide or double up on ISIS. But I'll just spare it out with, I've had the privilege of serving Nowland, the community and the residents for the last twelve years. I spent the last three years as captain, as we made a transition looking to stand up on our own. But more importantly, I'm a husband to my wife Jenny, I'm a father to two wonderful kids, eleven and thirteen. I've always been proud to represent this city, to be part of Nowland. But this last week has been tough, as I've been processing how we got where we are today. A place where I feel embarrassed of the place that I've lived. And the community that I serve. For how we were represented to surrounding communities and specifically to the entire fire service. With my time, I'm gonna spend a little bit, I wanna cover three main topics. First, I'm gonna address. The way, in the demeaning way that members of this council discuss what it is that we do and the position of fire chief. In my time as a firefighter, I have never. Had my sacrifice and the sacrifice of my family so marginalized as it was this last Tuesday. We are a highly trained group of individuals. Who have or are going through rigorous fire and medical training, and we continue to do on a weekly basis. So that we can be prepared on your worst day, our citizens' worst day. Cause that's generally when we show up. So to summarize everything that we do based on the last month's calls. Is appalling. Does not take into account every call that we've been to over the last year, the last three years. And for me, the last twelve years. The trauma that I get to carry. For the rest of my life, anytime I pass through this community, when I come across that intersection. Or that home. I would also like to challenge this council to truly ask themselves, as Isaac has, how we are, how we got here today. Today, we are less than two weeks from our current contracted chief, moving into an advisory role. Where he transitions all of his duties that was supposed to be moving to our next leader and chief. But due to the rash decisions made by the members of this council, this critical, and I mean critical. Transition will not happen. And I ask why? Why won't this be happening? Could it be the poor leadership, lack of foresight, inability to plan for the future of this department? Or the emergency service provided to this community? I'll let you decide that, but I want to be clear when I say this is not a twenty twenty-five budgetary issue. This is not something that just popped up out of nowhere. This council and leadership has had five and a half years. Because as any good leader would know, when we started this process, five and a half years. When we started the sep- separation with Ramsey. This was a possibility, and this was the conversation. As we were figuring things out, this is still something that as a leader, we need to be aware of. And planning for. The, the decision to go full-time or part-time, portions of this council have hired and worked with multiple advisors. That have given this council recommendation how this should, city should best serve the community. And it was this council that made the decision to move forward with full-time. It wasn't me, it wasn't the firefighters. It was on the recommendation of an advisor, but it was still this council that made that decision. And to pivot. With what felt like such little research and preparation. Not to mention against the advice of the individual that you hired. Is disrespectful towards the candidates and disgraceful to the city. Now, I don't want to minimize the difficulties of your positions. To be stewards of a budget, to be fiscally responsible as a whole. Because as a citizen, I expect that. But I do question what happened to the portion of the budget that paid for our St. Francis contract? An assistant chief and three officers at a time? When did the planned expense, when did this planned expense get lost among the other budget items? It was stated by members of council. Why can't we just continue to get by? Like we have for the last six months? We have been getting by because we should have, we should have had light because we had light at the end of the tunnel. Because we were meant to, per the contract of twenty twenty-four. Transition the last, during the last six months, which means we had a chief in place, a leader in place. For the last six months of the year, this didn't happen. Okay, well, how do we continue? Well, we have an idea, you know what, we're gonna have someone in place prior to Q four. We have a transition period. A leader in place for the future. We've been lucky to this point to get by. But at some point, our luck will run out. Our luck running out in emergency service? Worst case means expensive of life. The life of a citizen. Someone we serve. The life of one of our firefighters. By getting by. This council and specifically, members of this council have gambled with lives of the communities you have been elected to serve. This leads to the last thing I want to address. What is your plan? How do we transition this to an independent department with independent leadership? Of a chief? As you know, contractually, this transition begins October first. And we don't have any leadership in place. So what is your plan come January first? You have fifteen firefighters. You've hired eight over the last year. Unbelievable candidates. With great potential. But do you know what that means? That means that currently you have seven fully certified firefighters for the entire community. And based on our structure, you currently only have two that are qualified. To be officers. Currently, our contract with St. Francis allows for two additional personnel available during the day. This ends shortly, and due to the decisions of the board, we may not have someone available. Now, I want to take a step back and ask the council, as the mayor pointed out at the beginning. What is the department leadership this council was advised to have three years ago? Three years ago, we had a chief, an assistant chief that were contracted. Those two individuals worked tirelessly, endless hours to set this up, to get us prepared, and you supported them. And they did a phenomenal job making us better firefighters today to ser- to serve our community better. I can't speak to the amount of. Medical training that we have had, the increase that we have had. To better serve the, the members of this community, the variances that we now have. When we show up on scene, we can now provide more to our citizens than we could three years ago. Additionally, you had one Nowland Station Assistant Chief and three captains. Also recommended, as the mayor pointed out, that we are additional three lieutenants. But it wasn't just due for, due to a lack of interest of why these positions were not filled. It was due to the requirements of these positions. And we're a small staff. The intent was that this structure was to set this department up to serve this community. Minus the contracted chiefs for the long term. Yet today, you are asking a group of volunteers to serve this community without the minimum leadership structure to support this community. I know you are likely saying to yourself, no, we're not, we just want to go part-time. But as Isaac pointed out, that's not a debate for today. That was a debate for nine months ago, that was a debate for two years ago, and in my opinion, it should have started five and a half years ago. By believing that getting by is how we should serve our, the members of our community. This council puts the lives of volunteers that have committed to serving this community and the community members, your constituents at risk. That you were elected to serve. As we are getting by. So again, I ask, what is your plan? We, the firefighters, signed up to serve this community. We will continue to provide, provide service as highly trained group of individuals we are. But how long is this sustainable? How long can we operate under these conditions? Any council that hasn't planned for our future and has ignored the advice of an individual they hired. With almost thirty years of experience in the fire service. I personally committed three to five years as we transitioned from Ramsey. To give to this department, to continue to give to this community, to get us up on our feet. But here we are, three and a half years in. We started with twelve fully certified firefighters, we're down to seven. Eight phenomenal candidates who are the future. But we can only do so much, and at some point, there is a breaking point. What is it? It is yet to be determined. But I implore you to do what is right for your community. The safety of those that we serve every day on their worst day. If this department fails to be an independent department. There are great costs. To the, the residents of this community. Whether that be home insurance increases, whether that be having to pay for contractual coverage. For the fire service to cover this community. Those costs. Will make the cost of a full-time chief seem like pants. I thank you for your time, I thank you for serving, I thank you for being part of the council. To subjecting yourself to make this community better every day. But I ask for better, we ask for better. Thank you.
Captain, can I ask you a question? One of the, so, uh, Isaac, you said, obviously, the, the reprimand for being where we're at at this point. Uh, you're not lobbying full-time, part-time, but it's, it's the, the lack of respect. And I apologize for that, just on my own, not for the council. I love it, you know, it, it does seem like. You know, as mayor, as one voting member of the council, I, I do take my care of you. But I have four partners and administrators. But we stand here, as you stand here before us. What if you, I'm told you're not lobbying one way or the other, full-time, part-time, but in fact, it's gone too long. What is the app at this point, it's gone too long, we need to move forward. What is your plan? What is your plan to where two part-time captains don't have to take the brunt of this? Because behind the scenes. This year. Starting on January first, we now had a one contracted chief. And we had two captains. Come April, we were down to one captain. My time is stretched as the single captain. And I'm not even looking at what Chief Schmidt does administratively. To keep us compliant. With all the regulations that are needed to run a fire department. Now, my fellow firefighters have definitely stepped up, and I have not done this alone. But that was a short-term solution. Because we were to have a full turn, full-time and or part-time, we were to have a leadership in place by June. So that was supposed to be minimal. Hey, I, I understand you, we missed the mark. And, and so at this point. Who's going to do it if, if a chief or a part-time reporter? Is engaged during this transition period? It's not possible. It's, it's not possible, if you have two full-time candidates. Do not take the part-time role. And in turn, due to what happened on Tuesday, do not take. If we tri- change course, go back to full-time. Do not take that. It's not possible to have someone in place before January first. When Chief Schmidt is out of the picture. The hiring process and government moves too slow for that to happen. And then how long during the course of twenty twenty-five? Are we going to continue to do this? How long is it sustainable?
All right, hard to say.
I'm leery of continuing this conversation with, with only four members of the council here at this time. But you can continue when you need be, I just don't wanna. In an effort to speed things along, I'm just having this conversation with, with reservation without council member holders here.
Welcome, Mayor.
Welcome, Mayor Ray.
I don't say anything, I didn't speak too long today. We're even during the budget, uh, budget meeting, offering. My heart, we were going down the road, hired a full-time fire chief. There was minimal discussion on what would a part-time look like? But there was never anything provided to us to look at what a part-time candidate would be, what would a part, part-time candidate be. The administrator layer would speak with the, um, the candidates, they could, they'd keep their hat in their ring. In regards to part-time, they didn't say they were part-time, but they keep their hat in their ring. But the question was, what does part-time look like? And we have no idea. We don't know hours, salaries, benefits, duties, because when we put out for a full-time position. Part-time position isn't going to be able to do all that work. So what else is there to do? I understand, and what is our plan? I can't get into a break and take it out on January one. Um, I, we don't have the ability to do that. I'm grateful that our firefighters are willing to stick it out with us. Um, I wouldn't blame them if they all lost. Um, again, I think it's a, this is a slap in the face that all of our conversations. Serious conversations have been full-time, we advertise for full-time. And a week ago. A month before, we had a conversation, this, a week ago, we voted, I did not vote for Park. Um, in the budget hearing last night, let's say twenty grand out of the budget, I was fired one, I voted against that. Because I, in my heartfelt, that will come back, right? Um, and again, I, my, my dad was a firefighter, my uncle's a firefighter. Yep, none of you is a firefighter, the firefighters are gone. I understand the stress, um, that plays on the individuals that serve in those roles. And I think it's our responsibility to try to lessen that load, stress, by having an instructor in place. That can assist a firefighter, and I, in my heart, believe that that's a full-time fire chief. I, I would make a motion to, to reset what we did last week. Um, the council member, Brian, because the council member orders is not here. I would not do that, I don't know if, if a path. Um, I don't want to put the path up in here. But I, I, I. We should push, use my language, but we just. No, I'm sorry for saying that, but it's just.
Okay, level.
I think the problem came when we were presented with. A full-time, but it was a part-time or an informal position, something else. I haven't been here long enough.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I haven't been here long enough to know. Um, and I thank both of you for putting me in on that, because I didn't know the full extent of, um, the Nowland Fire Department. So it was nice to hear history and everything that went through.
There's a lot of work.
Um, so, I think the issue though, came up, is in at least some of our minds, is that. When the full, one of the full-time positions or the full-time position that was presented. Was a full-time, with part-time fire chief. And part-time doing something else, and I did go back and watch the video on that, and I don't have the date on it, it's in my notes here, but I can't find it. Where we did talk about that when that came up. Again, um, Chief Schmidt the other day, he talked about that, then gave that as an option again. So I think. The problem comes from, we did discuss that, and so in some of our minds, we, we did have a part-time, you know. And what happened was during that time period, some of us have gotten. People from the community, everything like that, I respect that. Um, the firefighters are upset with us, um, because it has been. A long time coming for them, and there's been issues along the way. Um, some I know about, some I don't. Um, but I think that's, that's where it comes from, is we were waiting for that other side of the plan. That we didn't get as to what that position would be. It's not, it's not that we, or like me, I wasn't, well, I wasn't willing to hire a full-time firefighter. Or fire, fire chief, excuse me. It was that I was waiting for that other side, and that has been asked a few times. So. That's partially the problem that's involved here.
Mr. Mayor.
That's my brain.
The council has a final, the job description mentions nothing. The scars responsible is other than firefighting responsibility. Full-time firefighter responsibility, firefighting responsibility, managing the fire department. I'm seeing what came up. So this is what we agreed to go up steps, I think we were. Um, I believe I said okay, maybe I didn't, but I, I was fine with it, I didn't have to make a comment, I, I agree with what was brought up. He has, he has administrator layer and said he's not, to give any other input. Um, in regards to that job description, that description goes out, it goes out at full-time. And then sometime after that, there's the question of can we do part-time? Yeah, you could, if that's what we entered, that's what we put out an application for. And you could, if you had a plan in place to say what is going to be done on, as far as the duties that were listed in this full-time fire chief position. Who's going to do those other duties? We didn't talk that. We did, we have general conversations about, well, they could do this or do that. Nothing in writing, nothing, nothing, just general conversations. And you can't make decisions on general conversation. You have to have a document in front of you that says this is what's going to happen. This is a full-time fire chief. These are the duties that have, have represented in the application for the job description, or we voted part-time. And these are the, out of the 15 responsibilities, there are only going to be seven. And the rest, we're going to figure out what's going to happen to those. But we never had that. All we had is a conversation that let's talk about part-time. Let's ask the other, um, ask the candidates if they go part-time. But nothing of any substance as to what that part-time would be. So how do they even make a decision? I mean, I don't know if they're leaving because I'm not involved in hiring process. And that's by virtue of council direction, our vote. And if you get everybody in there, then it's something we need. So I'm not involved in the hiring position for hiring process. But we said we were going to hire a full-time. And we then changed and we changed and we don't have a plan for what that changes. And I don't mean to be disrespectful in the comments, but yeah, you need, but we don't have a plan. And I said that, can we, we don't have a plan. We don't know what the other, you know, what isn't going to be done, what, um, do those other duties go back on the patterns that are already overloaded or volunteers? Okay, I'll volunteer, but they're not going to. But again, we don't have anything to even make a decision on. Other than the initial app, job description that went out, which is for our, for full-time position. So that's my plan. We, we don't have any, you know. If people felt strongly enough that we can go down to a part-time, then there should have been documentation to us to say, this is, this is why I believe we can go down to a part-time. But we don't have any. All we did is voted on, let's ask them to say, well, not, this is what you're going to do.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm Senator Brian.
As I mentioned on Tuesday, and I'm still in favor of a, of full-time fire chief. When we have training and retention, um, and recruiting as our priorities. I'm, if I had really looked, went through the job description for the whole. I would say it can easily fit, fit a part-time position, but I agree, we don't have a, in particular, an exact thing going forward, but it's a matter of, we have, based on the vote that was taken on Tuesday, we have to move forward regardless of what it is. And we need to, and, and we need to continue on from there. And ideally, we have that wrapped up ASAP, so.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm Senator Ray.
How is a person supposed to accept a position without knowing that? I, I guess I don't know that.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm Senator Brian.
As I said, we, regardless of which direction we go, full-time or part-time, we need to put a plan in place. We have a, we have a job description that, in my opinion, will work in either position. The rest of the details, if we're going to continue down with the, with what council voted on Tuesday, just go forward with part-time. As we talked about on Tuesday, we, we take that, we take that vote. And even though I voted against that, we need to take that and, and run with it to finish, to finish the job of getting somebody in place.
Mr. Mayor.
Senator Ray.
I don't disagree that we need somebody in place, but again, how can you expect somebody with that position when as a council, we have determined what part-time hours, salary, benefits, so how, how can, we can keep moving forward, but at one point do we make a notice decision? If that truly is the continuing focus of the council is to stay at part-time. And, and I think the motion was only just asking that they'd accept part-time. I don't remember a motion saying, we are going to part-time. It was, would they consider, but I, I could be wrong and I don't have the minutes to run. So. But again, how do you expect, how do we go forward if they don't have documentation? Nobody's been directed to put anything together. So.
I do have some numbers.
Agreed. Your thoughts?
I shared them already. What I'm sharing is that and what most all that, I think the confusion had come on with when we were going back and forth from petition was here to give us the eligible. And then we kept not talking about it through the year and things were clarified yet. And then we were presented with the option of getting a full-time position from a part-time chief, part-time doing something else. And so I think that's where some of the confusion came in as well. This is that we were waiting for that other part of the planning to be presented as to what that person could be doing on the other side. And so I was just wrapping that up. I mean, yeah. If you don't know, you don't have. I think that's how, she thought that company needed to be. One, you need a company that's ready to play. And whatever, firefighters, same as well. And given his series of life, um, professional, you need, you need, appreciate. With the.
Two spoke, they did a lot of them. Part-time, full-time. They did explain to us the registration, it takes long. Their opinion, it's five and a half minute process. Or so forth, you know, plenty more. There, it's, it is, it's sleep, leadership for the department. So if the council is not taking action for this one. And they seem to have a plan, they have something to replace by then. If these candidates, they're in the loop, decide they don't want it, whatever offer is going to put them in, they don't want it. Or we go back and say, full-time, and they decide they don't want it anyway. So. Again, the, something we haven't discussed. There's also the possibility to enter us in the transition period. So there's a reason for somebody carrying things through once. Sometimes it's cheaper. What that would look like, yeah, so my point.
Yeah.
Senator Ray.
The council member Alders here, um, I would move that I thought of vote to go back to the direction of a full-time fire chief. And there's a little bit of that in the interview process, sort of as results in that new calendar that we make a decision, um, based on the candidates that we have. And we get that fire chief in place and we move forward.
Mr. Mayor, can we get on one, something we just agreed to last week? Yeah, yes, you can. So the actual move from last week goes. Jen is going to put together some numbers. As we discussed last week, we thought the job description still held. So we have a job description, we have some numbers. But we have a wage structure to consider. We have a job description that we've been told. And we have two panels that are open to part-time. So why would we have ones? Senator Ray.
I know, I got plenty of questions that they are, but they are willing to keep their name again. They're not saying that they are going to accept it. Because you can't accept something if you don't have one in this.
We don't, they're going to accept it either, Alder.
Correct. But, uh, he was a lot like, less likely, what are, part-time, but I, I, again, I said, I'm not a good one. But. I don't know, it's second on my mind.
That amending, Mr. Mayor. So Brad, that amending your original motion, I'm just trying to follow over here.
But the initial motion was just to discuss whether the council would take any of them. So we've redone that, that we have that conversation. Part of that, I had a motion that we would go back, change that to full-time, which is what we advertised with it as, complete the hiring process. Hopefully, some candidates come out of there and we explore whether it's a part chief.
I'll take it for discussion, Mr. Mayor. So right, technically does not, doesn't seem, wouldn't seem much to come from someone who voted no or, or voted, like, wait.
You guys don't follow Robert.
Okay, then I don't know about it.
Robert's tools of order, we tell him part-time, it's never.
Don't worry about it, it's awesome.
Yeah, I know, I understand. I just want to make sure.
Something in parliament, the general public, the procedure, this is two things. I just want to make sure of it right now. But.
Senator. I think, I think some of the action line from last week was you were going to do some discussion with some of the other local communities and go through communities, what size are they, are they full-time or part-time, they are part-time. What's the salary range and what does that look like? So it's been four days.
So I just have some, yes, stuff yesterday. So, um, but you, the two communities that got back to me were, um, Cityville Road and St. Michael. And City of St. Michael have one part-time, um, fire chief. It's 20 to 40 hours, um, average is 30. And, um, the price that they are paid is 43,000. And, yeah.
Shanny, thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't. And then the Oak Road is 20 hours a week. It's flexible and probably look at plus one, we're not, I'm not comparing apples to apples yet. I haven't gotten down with everything yet. So this is just my research so far. Um, they get 30, he gets 36,000 a year for 20 hours a week. Again, um, what they do is flexible for tax and good tax. And so I'm still looking into that. So, um, job descriptions are actually according to what I'm getting. I haven't fully gone through the St. Michael one yet. But, um, the Cityville Road, their scope of responsibility is larger than ours. Um, St. Michael, like I said, I haven't gone through, but all the songs there is on there. So I'm just trying to clear those right down. That's why I'm, that's why I'm.
Was it salary? Was it salary for St. Michael?
St. Michael was 43,000.
Thank you.
It was the exception.
So, Mr. Mayor, remember all the, standing based on employer app. What would you add a folder that you can put everything with yet?
I can try and have it done, but I don't know if I did, I'm going to send them to you back and we'll use it.
Okay. So, um, maybe we have that. We have basically a rating analysis, analysis, and we have two other cities, one substantially larger than ours and the other one moderately larger than ours.
But, um, Oak Road is 8,000 and then technical.
25-ish thousand. Okay. So we would.
And I can look at some communities that I've got some, a column to, I'm going to see it on cities that are both, closer to our side.
So they asked, would we come back, put together what we think? And our interest in it would be, you know, to look at the basic job description, decide what we have. Is that, is that the task? Is that the ask? Senator Ray.
I guess I want to know is, when these are part-time fire chiefs, who's doing all the other stuff? Are, if St. Michael has an HR department, are they doing hiring and recruiting or is the part-time fire chief in charge of hiring and recruiting? What are they getting assistance from other fire departments for different things? Are they getting, um, did they get assistance from accounting? You know, I, I don't know. I have, it's hard to just look at, this is the position at this dollar amount.
Right, that's why I was searching. Just working for that, essentially, but, but I know we didn't have that example for we had said it for, here, so what it was trying to do is go through each thing first, little, I'm sorting through each of their job descriptions, their responsibilities to kind of, who does what. Learning that right now. But if there's specific things that council would want, I need to do that. So thank you for that.
Senator Ray.
I guess if you go down part-time, something's not going to get done. And what is going to get done or who is going to be responsible for getting stuff? What tasks are going to be assigned to other staff, whether it be administrative staff or captain staff, lieutenant staff, whatever, our structure is going to be.
But very, I don't know if you could say that because we just said that the position could be half fire chief, half something else. So if it's half something else, the task is going to get done in another half a month. So I don't want to, bro, okay, that well, it's not going to get done if it's above hand. We have very small community and very few activities that are going on. And it's less than half of what we budgeted, not including benefits. And we just looked at the budget on Sunday. Sheriff's Department is up 56% and the staff budget is up, how much, 60%. And the largest increase has been the staff budget. This is something that we can control and we can decide how we want it to work in the city. And we talked about the levels where we've had with the chief this year. And what we've been getting, and we know that probably isn't enough, but we know the, the level that we've been getting is less than part-time.
Mr. Mayor.
Senator Ray.
I, I would ask that, being more accurate here, do firefighters, so we go back and listen to their comments. Three, those are me. I try to stay the lowest capacity, so having the lowest pack rate in the county. That's really nice to say, but we're not providing services that we should be providing for our residents. Trying to stay the lowest tax, we, so having the lowest tax rate in town, that's really nice to say, but we're not providing the services that we should be providing for our residents. Um, and we have a limited ability to bring revenues in based on. The structure of the city and our five acre minimums. I don't believe anybody's willing to go down to less than that, I, you know, I've never heard this conference that they wanna go down to less than eight per forty. I've never heard a resident telling me that we should go down to less than eight per forty. Well, if your, your, your costs go up, everybody's cost, personnel costs are typically eighty to ninety percent of a bunch. And we have brought in staff, we've brought in capable staff, um, and, and. In order to keep them, you need to pay them. We've made decisions that we were gonna offer the long term, the short term, there's, there's different ways to get a medical, um. And that was a possible issue for that, but we felt that was important. And that is important. Again, I, I just. I don't see a plan for going for, you know, part time. Arrange, but that's a, I always said.
And again. I know, nobody wants us to continue to be the lowest tax. Well, nobody in this room wants us to be lowest taxed. Our budget discussion started this year with twenty percent. My neighbor, he's all going at three to three. They're, they're still lower than we, they may have gone up, but they're still lower, our, our. Great. scrutiny of the budget, whether it's proposals, we give more to the council, it's a no, ninety grand a dollar pushback. But we are looking at sixty percent, what ten percent increase in revenue and six percent increase in, in staff costs. And we're not bringing the A1 close to those. And, because we're gonna, you know, if, if we stick to what we said last night, that's ten percenting. We were told that it's just eighty dollars. But I don't think that's the, the driving factor. We, we have some other things that people aren't willing to give up. And so there was a discussion here, if there is an option, to at least look at. I understand the urgency of moving forward, because we got an email this week, and oh, by the way, and now we transitioned. Again, in, in my mind, it's, it's poor timing to say, oh, by the way, in case you didn't know. Every day's already come. I don't know that. That's appropriate even, oh, by the way, you got two weeks and we're not, it's like that appeal to. I do agree that plan has to be put in place and have to put in place in the council, we have transition going on before the end of the year. Do I agree that, that all has to go as slowly as it did this time? No, we had that same argument when we were, we're gonna hire an officer. If we don't do something right now, it's gonna be mid-July before we have any. And we were, we were ready to go before the candidate. So I do think that, that the system's in place, we just have to have the numbers to say, is it reasonable? To even operate. And, and if that something has been happened by Monday, I don't think we can wait longer than that, we don't have, nobody's gonna say, is this reasonable? As a candidate would attempt it. But we have to be moving, we have to move as a team, but if you have it, and then our administrator. And make sure we're communicating, here's our options, who you want to step in.
Needs player.
Of all right.
Other cities may be at three percent, we're at nine, but last year, New York.
I'm buying it.
That, previous years, other cities were in double digits and we didn't, and we are paying for it. So, um, again, take, take it on a little. Um. I guess, if, if Alford doesn't wanna vote, my motion says they're for it. But then the next motion to be made, what, how are we gonna move forward? What is it specifically that we are looking for from councilman, councilmember Flattable? To determine if we stay on the road to be part time, what are those responsibilities going to be? What isn't gonna get done? What do we expect to put on our captains? For our administrative staff? What assistance do they get from other agencies? Do they have, the internal HR, does the fire chief done, done that, the hiring and recruiting? Who handles the training, I mean, there's, there's a whole host of things. That would have to be decided and we would need to know. And compare what these other cities are doing. Compared to what we wanted to do, and. That one need to be better, except sooner than later. And at this point, you know, I. Trying to get information from other agencies is not easy.
No, I, I don't, no, I've got, like I said, I've got everything. Not, not, um, like, is it, it's serious, it's serious with them around me. Getting you, but the call is happening.
So, um.
Which is what I'm telling you.
But we gotta, we gotta, get a meeting, what are we, what are we expecting, when is this meeting? And. Look at what's presented. So, let's call for my goals, call over my motion, which is moving back to the full time position, um, complete the hiring process. And move forward with the full time chief.
Okay, motion on the floor. Oh, in favor, signature by the senior guy.
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion, thanks. Now the motion is to. Councilman Flattable, bring the package back, it's gonna be done by Monday.
Been trying to get it done by Monday, if I have all these people that I sent out, stuck to. With that, you, so I'm hoping.
If we don't have the fact that you definitely consult on the decision.
Yeah.
It's wearing. And I, um, request that administrator Lender be sent the job description that we were working out for the full time position. And at least, as I mentioned, that using that can. I would say most of that can be used as a, a. Preliminary JavaScript, if we need a part time fire, uh, party. All right, so that motion. Oh. I'll say. You may need motions, if you need a motion for, yes, yeah. Right, the motion, something Brian, something something Rollins. I was a favorite singer by the same time.
I, I.
Forty one. Councilmember Rainbow.
And Mr. Mayor. What was it to use a job description as the posting? Oh, okay, wouldn't that just be an action item? Okay.
It's, it's correct, it's.
Okay.
Let me, but that motion was just the issue of sending the. Job description, okay, because we had a motion on before the beginning, and now an issue of. We're gonna redirecting, Shanny, councilmember Flattable to you. So, if we wanna take that motion off, then I am in favor of the. Description going back out to you. We had a motion as to what the direction, councilmember Flattable. Was going on. So, so we intermix those, and that's. Yeah.
So, I have no problem bringing information. But I, again, to council, and I will burn what I can on Monday, and, and we have to make a decision.
We have a, some budget meeting on Monday. I noticed, but I would, you've already noticed this purpose for tonight, so this meeting would be continued. You're ignoring this meeting, you would just continue this meeting, to a time date, play certain, whenever your budget meeting is on Monday.
Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that, that I'm speaking on terms, but I, I do have one request for councilmember Flattable to go along with her search process, may I ask that? Would you also please find out the age of the fire departments that you are comparing us to? I would argue that neither are three and a half years old, you just found their blood when you do that.
And what, just?
Just found their new feet. They are not, I was, I'm sorry. I'd like to know what that, what that looks like, from a, well, one, that you stand, don't give comparison.
Say, what you're, just for clarity, you're asked, Simon, sir.
Flattable.
Just for clarity, you want me to find out the age of the fire departments?
Correct.
That I'm looking at?
Correct, from a comparison standpoint.
From a comparison standpoint. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we continue to the start of our budget. Which would impact on budget. And the information. Councilman Flattable, send back, and it's to. Taking information we have from the, from the Oak Road and the other. Things related to the background, that would fight, so we. She would have certain responsibilities. And, uh. Job descriptions, hours worked. Um. Paid. And age of the fire departments, member of firefighters. So we can compare.
Okay.
Anything else to move on, councilman Flattable, or?
She had said. No, I would like that we are, um. For those items that are in our job description.
Mm-hmm.
Um. What other, either city department handles all of the staff, the fire department? Or are they getting assistance from. Surrounding fire departments, whether it be another municipality, under accounting? That are on hours.
That is made in our job description, except who's there? If, if they, these other departments are looking at, they don't have the same responsibilities. Who in their organization, their big city, like St. Michael, they might be, army head out to HR or. Somebody else, when chief isn't taking all of the, somebody else in the stadium doing. When it's going to keep doing all of these things, or is it named chair and other staff? Got that right?
Yeah, for other agents.
Mr. Mayor. Have they all, if this feels like this is gonna be a bit of a working session to go through, um, and we invite Chief Schmidt to work through this with us. Uh. Certainly, if you'd want to come. So, Mr. Mayor, were you asking if you'd love to come? And certainly can. And. We keep, start down at six o'clock, and you'll know that. Thank you, man. I'd be here at six thirty, I have a, a bit of a switch that works, so. There you go. Six thirty Monday.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Are we changing the six PM time then on the posting?
I think that our six o'clock budget can still come.
Okay.
This discussion will be waiting some councilor dollars.
Okay.
We still have our budget meeting starts.
Okay.
This discussion would have been a difficult concept, but, have a put it, this is back to half the country.
Okay.
Just for purposes of time date, play certain, keep it consistent, this meeting is going to be. Not adjourned, reset until Monday at six o'clock to coincide. With the understanding that this action item will probably occur sometime after six thirty.
Correct.
So, I'm going to start it on.
Yeah. Need to chat over this thing in person. Just. And, 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 and. Yeah.
Yeah. I said, the second, uh, second couple, I've said in regards to, um, administrative staff concerned regarding inner race, inter-racial, including. One or more members of the nearby staff, um. And I would like the, um, staff to deal with this, their concern. In regards to what was. The conversations were. What was the reason of contacting them? Whether violation of our policies that say you cannot contact. The consultants and putting this in return, although, I'm still gonna buy it, saying, saying.
And. Ruby, I'm gonna ask that this matter, this matter views with a personnel issue that is presently pending before the city. Excuse me, and will need to be, uh, brought to the attention of the entire council at the appropriate time, but in a closed session. So this will be discussed, but it has to be done in a closed session, and we can close it pursuant to thirteen B point oh five. As we have in the past with other issues, and at that point in time, closed session, the issues. Appropriate, or responsible and appropriate staff will be available. And that is not something that can happen tonight, that would have to be, for a special closed meeting on the council, just what you mean, I mean this. But tonight, I would ask you to, to table this matter until that could be addressed by the council. In closed session.
All right.
Attorney Ruby, am I able to have, have our staff filed a complaint? With any of the body of the council in regards to work-related issues?
There is work-related issues that have emerged with councils, and they've been rocking my attention, and they are something that is now presently pending before this council. The city, so I can't talk about it tonight in public, because we've asked, we discussed in a private session like we've had in the past.
Well, I'm not asked if staff has initiated. A conversation, if any elected official.
I will not be speaking about this tonight, I will speak to it at the appropriate time. But yes, there, there's, council, Sam has initiated conversation, and this needs to be at the appropriate time and place, so. That is my recommendation to you.
Are we able to ask staff if they did initiate the conversation or?
This will not be discussed tonight, that is my recommendation to you, that's. I apologize, but I'll have this conversation, you know, to the administrator this morning, there were limitations on what we could discuss with this topic. I apologize, but I'll have this conversation with you, you know, to the administrator this morning, there were limitations on what we can discuss with this time.
Something that is initiated by other than employees.
Yes.
Are we, then, all, all of that, um, kind of new inside of whatever this, so, but, yeah. So, I would call, since today is, who they still Friday night.
Well, um, or we can finish our agenda, close the meeting at what time, we have to notice, no, we haven't. Start the meeting. Mr. Mayor, that's not right, I had other comments. I'm on vacation all week. I can be back on Monday, few years, but then I'm leaving again, she's like, Mark. First day of. Back by three again, from that one. All right. Asian, yeah.
I'm sorry, what was that date?
Monday, September thirtieth, six thirty. Special meeting. Closing. So, then.
Mr. Mayor.
How's our angle?
So, attorney Ruby. Are the employees under any obligation? Not to speak to the issue when asked by. Another council member and or resident?
I cannot direct a, anyone subject to your authority to, you know, to speak or not speak. That is, that is completely in the right, what it does need to do, you know, now, is though, because it. I'm aware of it, and we have certain rights and responsibilities that we have to follow in Minnesota law, as you guys have all known. The power from past unemployment cases and stuff, as soon as we have knowledge of it, we have to investigate, we have to get to the bottom. And then we have to present all of that information to the council, for the council in those second to determine. Whether there's any disciplinary action warranted or not, if the council is determined that they're listening to. Every all information, but no. Disciplined warranted. Then, at that point in time, the matter is tied, but if council decides that. Based on everything that they heard, that something does need to be taken and counseling or talking to is not considered discipline. Well, then that matter becomes now public. And that's why I just have to stay private until such time as the council makes that admission come out. And if. If, if the council does determine that no discipline warranted, and, you know, that's within their rights, based on the facts presented, then this matter just. Is clearly closed, goes away, uh, but we have to go through the process. That right?
Attorney Ruby, I just again want to clarify that. If staff so choose to speak to. Either another council member or a member of the public, they have that right to do that.
Yes.
But if you.
It still doesn't negate the fact that they have to go through the process.
No, I don't, I just want to make sure that staff understand their, their rights and, you know.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Mr. Ruby, could you please explain to me how overworked and understaffed goes through the word hostile at work environment?
I will not be discussing this tonight, I make myself very clear, other instructions on us under state law, that we can do what we can do. I will not be discussing this tonight. All right, so that is triggered until Monday, September thirtieth.
All right, Mr. Mayor, my third request for action, a couple actions in regards to our personnel committee. Um, happy to do some wordsmithing here, um. But I would go down to request for council action that also affirmed one of the following options regarding the personnel committees. One is we are meeting with the personnel committee with young members, in position open, so such time. That policies directing operating guidelines for this meeting are developed and adopted by the council. Our second option is to eliminate this personnel committee, if I have a second for that, then you speak to it.
I have a second, good.
Mr. Mayor, I bring this forward, um, it actually was talked about a while back, but we didn't do anything, um, but there were general conversations. About our committees and having guidelines put forward, um, for the responsibility of the committees. The history of the personnel committee has been that they have taken assignments as directed by council. And not, um, directed amongst themselves, um. I, I can't speak to whether that occurred or not, um. But I believe we need to, um, have guidelines for the committee, so I would ask the council board to do number one.
I'm gonna say that we can set three, if we, um, whether it's going to be policies, um, rules and others. But there have not been definitions, but we have appointed. The council members to be the hiring committee. So by the meeting lot, and, uh. And morph into what we call personnel committee, so I would motion that we eliminate personnel committee.
I already made that.
Oh, you said one or the other, to clarify.
So, the choice of eliminate, that's fine.
So I would, I would.
I have a.
Okay, sorry, so we have a motion to, to one of these two, and, and I would ask you to amend it, to just eliminate personnel committees.
With Mr. Mayor, I would be able to accept that amendment by motion, but the motion would read that we eliminate personnel committee. Um, but whatever actions taken, the staff should be directed to update annual appointments, resolution forty, forty-four, January eighty-three, and bring it back to the council. At the, should be on Thursday morning.
They said that the council can still point. Even credits for this, and. All right, so we have a motion.
If we eliminate the personnel committee. Part of that personnel committee's responsibility has passed, had been hired.
You don't have any expectation, you show me where it's at. We have a hiring committee and it morphed into a personnel committee that never got the part. And that's part of the problem is it's not the part, that's gonna say, we either leave it open until we define it. And since it's not, I'm saying just eliminate it, and as needed, appoint council members to do interviews.
As needed, not, maybe just the members of that department.
Right, right now, it's, it's been a, a, a committee, but that's how we eliminate the personnel committee. And so with that, is the understood motion? That would be good.
We're going to eliminate the hiring committee, no, I'm sorry, the personnel committee that's never really been defined. And the hiring committee will be there, but with no appointed council members? I'm missing it, then.
There will be, uh, when the hiring is necessary, there will be council appoint.
Okay.
We'd be with the interview and they recommend that you back to the, and as, as we said before, whoever's on that, those are the voting members. The work with staff, like, uh, council votes to bring forward the candidates, the council members, I don't think. Those bring the candidates forward to the council, for, for, at this point. It's a request, but I'm gonna need to prove enough, so that, being the motion. All of the papers, if I have a sign on it.
Aye.
Post. Here.
Mr. Mayor. We will, we will continue this meeting on Monday, September twenty-third. Twenty-third until six thirty, so we're, we're gonna start the budget first. Okay.
See, the council, they're like, get it discussed, clear. Start, and if the king gets meaning to six o'clock. All right, I have a motion, second. All of the papers, if I have a sign on it.
I'm sorry, who was second?
Me. Yeah.